All right, let's call to order this Isaguas City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting on Tuesday, March 25th. We have three major items on the agenda, starting with numerous presentations from members of the city staff pertaining to our council effort on city goals, followed up by an item regarding the Kohani annexation. And then, those are the really two main ones, and opportunity for all of us on the council to give our regional reports, something we are doing during regular council meetings, so this would just be an update. So we're going to start with the council goals. Now, there's an order in the agenda. It's emerging issues, then the Economic Vitality Commission SWAT analysis, followed by the 2013 city goal updates, followed by the finance 2014, excuse me, 2013 fourth quarter year-end report. And we're going to switch the order a little bit, and Diane, I hope you don't mind, we're going to ask, are you going to be giving the financial update? So, let's start with that and follow that with...
We'll do 2013 goals?
Yeah, we're going to go from the bottom up.
Yes.
On the, so we're going to go DCBA. Sorry for members of the public who showed up and really wanted emerging issues first.
(laughing).
Thank you, Diane.
So, good evening. I'm Diane Marcotte, the Finance Director for the City of Isaguas. Tonight, we are doing a summary of our 2013 activity and focusing in on a couple of our major funds. Included in the handout for tonight is a more detailed explanation of what happened during 2013, and tomorrow it would be available up on the city's website after the conclusion of tonight's meeting. But for tonight, we're going to be talking about how we did in 2013, particularly in the general fund and our utilities. What this report is, is really a comparison of budget versus actual expenditures. This is not a discussion on the city's official financial statements. We're in the process of, we're nearly completing those. If you recall, in June of last year, we spent a lot of time going through the various funds and all of the financial operations, and that is what we call GAAP basis, generally accepted accounting principles. And that basis of accounting is different than the presentation tonight. So tonight, basically, is talking about how the money came in in 2013 and how we spent the money without all of the compliance and technical requirements that are required in our accounting profession. So, starting out, how did we do? So, in the general fund, we ended revenues being about 2.2% lower than budgeted, and that was primarily due to several revenue categories that we're going to talk about here in a few minutes. And then, our general fund expenditures ended up being 3.5% lower than budgeted. So, in the general fund, when we take all of our various departments, from the City Council Department to Development Services to ED and Police, we ended up underspending by 3.5%. The ending cash reserve ended at $8,059,000. What we did do is, you'll see later on, we had to use around $200,000 of last year's ending fund balance or this year's beginning fund balance in order to balance out operations. The budget had originally contemplated using $1 million, so we did extremely well when you look at the overall big picture. The council adopted a goal last fall that our targeted reserve for the general fund was 15%. And as you can see in the last bullet, we ended up being, where the coverage ratio for 2013 is 24% of expenditures. So, we well exceeded the council goal that you adopted last year. General fund revenues, you can see the actual comparison. We received $34.3 million. Our budget was $35 million. Expenditures were 34.5 and anticipated was 35.7. So, in relationship, you can see that we, you know, overall revenues and expenditures, you know, being off by 2 or 3% in a $35 million budget is very good. If it was a 10% variance, we'd be having more of a conversation. What happened was, we saw a significant boost in retail sales. One of the things is really interesting, when you look at 2012 actuals compared to 2013, about that time, the economy really began to pick up, and we saw a lot of construction work. So, while we met our sales tax projection, what's really important to note is that between 2012 and 2013, our sales tax grew nearly 13%. So, you can really tell that in this, in the City of Isaguas, we definitely came out of the recession and we saw, you know, tremendous improvement in our retail sales. Conversely, we saw a slight overall increase in our BNO tax because it represents a lower percentage, the variance or the increase is much smaller. Our municipal court revenue, we continue to see since 2010, a decrease in the revenues. Part of the reason we didn't hit our revenue target in part was because of revenues, and I think in some, when you look at what we budgeted in 2013, it was more reflected of revenues that we saw in 2010 and 2011. For the 2014 budget, we did a realignment that we believe is more realistic based upon what we've actually been seeing for revenues coming in over the last several years. Building permit revenue...
Sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Diane, question, Josh?
Yeah, I just had a question on that last slide. What, in your estimation, explains this? Is it fewer filings? Is it fewer, less compliance with payment of fines? What's driving down the court revenue?
My understanding of it is, you know, in 2010, what you saw was a lot more revenue associated with traffic infractions or parking infractions. What has happened is, there's a lot more emphasis in more severe type crimes that take longer to process and involve less, they're not as easy to collect the revenue. I don't know if the chief has anything. Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I can tell you that what we did do was, we have the camera up at the school, and we're also beginning to see some decline in that revenue. So, it's sort of the good news, the bad news is, we're seeing less revenue because we're having greater compliance. So, ultimately, in the end game, that is what we wanted, but the result is that we're seeing less revenue in that category also. Building permit revenue was 7% higher than budgeted. We'd had some conversations during the development of the 2014 budget. Some of this revenue that we see coming in, a lot of the spike, some of it came in towards the end of the year. So, really, what happens is, we bring that revenue in and the associated expenditures we see in 2014. There is a lag between when we actually collect the revenue versus when we issue the permit. So, we collect it upfront, do the work, and then issue the permit. So, we, over time, we really look long-term and look at it as far as a smoothing, what does it look like over the last four or five years versus a snapshot in time? Other major sources of revenue are our property taxes, and here you can see, we came in a little bit under what we had budgeted. That's pretty typical, you do, we actually are about 98% of our collections overall when you look at year over year. So, we really have a low rate of delinquency on property taxes and property, and then maybe properties going into foreclosure. Our utility taxes were up higher than what we had anticipated. When you look at our water revenue coming up, you'll see that our revenue for our water utility came in. So, some of that is, you know, when you look and that, and then when you look at that and compare it to PSE, which is one of our primary taxpayers there, you can sort of see the correlation between the weather and the revenue. So, we sort of, you know, a lot of it is weather-dependent. Jail services, towards the end of the year, we saw an increase, and a lot of it was as a result of some changes in Snohomish County. So, towards the end of the year, revenue, we were averaging around 66 prisoners.
Before, we were down 15,000.
Yeah, so we've been seeing an increase, and we anticipate that increase to carry forward into 2014. And then, recreation and pool fees, those came in a little bit under budget also. This is just a comparison over four years, and you can see that the largest change is in our sales tax, but pretty much all of our other revenue streams are pretty much hitting the target, you know, like we talked about earlier, the court revenue is down. When I started going back in and analyzing a lot of our budgeted revenue, once again, when you look at what we budgeted for revenue in the general fund, they were more reflected of money that we saw coming in in 2010 and 2011. And then, when we built the 2014 budget based on the revenue side, I really adjusted those. And that then brought in a lot of the conversation we had in the development of the 2014 budget, where we had to come back with some additional new revenue streams as well as says reductions in expenditure. So, I think, I feel like our revenues have been kind of tested and readjusted based upon what we really historically have been seeing in the past. So, on the expenditure side, how did departments perform? So, overall, we came in at 3.5% under budget. Some of the major categories in the finance department, the reason, while the delta isn't all that large, it's about $70,000. Part of that was a payout of one of our senior employees in the department. In the legal department, it is really based upon, they just simply bill us for the time. We have been working with the departments to educate them to ways to do some of their own research, giving them more tools where using like, for instance, MSRC as the first line of defense to do research instead of always calling our legal, our outside legal counsel. Human resources, what we did there was, it wasn't necessarily a savings but a reallocation. And historically, in the past, we had some general citywide benefits, and they were all charged out of the human resources department. During 2013, what we began to do was actually charge the applicable departments and the applicable funds for their portion of that cost. So, instead of just being lumped into human resources, it's been reallocated where it's more appropriate. And then, information technology, the change was that we had a vacancy in that position, and we held that position vacant through the end of the year. Economic development, they had some of the larger savings because they had a position that was vacant for a good portion of the year. And then, the last one is, we had some savings in our other governmental services, that one. Other governmental is a department where it really isn't tied to a specific activity, so sometimes there's variance in how we spend that money. So, that's sort of a big-picture summary of how we spent our money. You know, one of, you know, most of the departments do a very good job of managing their resources. They provide us information when they think they're having some problems, and we do a lot of problem-solving to make sure that every, overall, we can manage the city's budget. Just summary, once again, finance department was our senior employee who retired. Oh, also in legal fees, we did some, some of this is offset by revenue, but we did some changes in our services for public defense and prosecution. We entered into a relationship with Snohomish, the City of Sama, Snohomish. And then, we pay the bill, and then they pay us back. Human resources is our HRA account. Information technology is both a vacancy and a transfer of an employee to Public Works. Economic development, some of the change year over year was, 2013 was their first full year. 2014, their budget is reflective of their actual expenditures. And then, other governmental services is a reduction in operating transfers. So, our utilities, on the revenue side, 2013, you can see that our water revenue was up substantially. Our sewer revenue did not meet our target, and our storm was right on target. And once again, when we went back and analyzed, our consumption for water was up, so the corresponding revenue increase made sense when we looked at the water revenue. So, this sewer revenue, the majority of the revenue that comes in is really a pass-through to King County Metro. Our portion of the actual sewer utility revenue is very small. And then, on the stormwater, you can just see the gradual increase. We've not had a rate increase for several years, and so the actual increase in revenue is just simply to do, due to new customers being added. On the expenditure side, all three of the funds came in under budget as far as operations. Some of that was due to vacancies in PWO, they held some positions open for a while, and just underspending in supplies and other line items. And just a three-year comparison of operating expenditures. You can see in the water utility, there has been some consistency between 2012 and 2013 their operations. We haven't added any additional staff. We've, you know, added a little bit of additional money for some repairs and maintenance. Again, in the sewer utility, the primary change between 2012 and 2013 is our increase in fees to, that are passed through to Metro because we did not do a rate increase in any of our three utilities in 2013 as well as 2012. And then, in the stormwater, once again, that is just a relationship of, as we grow, as we take on more obligations, then we have more expenses related with managing our stormwater And then, a little bit, what's ahead for 2014? We are very optimistic about our sales tax. We've seen our January and February numbers, they're looking good, they're looking strong, so we're hoping that trend will continue throughout the year. Included in your, the detailed presentation is a breakdown of sales tax between our two largest categories, which is retail sales tax and then sales tax on construction. That sales tax on construction for 2013 as well as 2014 is up. Just as a reminder, can, sales tax on construction, we typically say it's one-time money. It isn't like a retail business that is bricks and mortar and is here to stay, you know, it's really dependent upon the economy and what's happening in the development arena. Building activity, as we talked about, continues to be very strong. The Development Services Department has been very busy, and economic development has been working in partnership with them to make sure they have a lot of work to do. Healthcare, we will be reporting out to the council by June. In 2013, we went self-insured. At the end of this month, we will be working with our broker to get a summary of 2013 activity, and then we'll bring it forward to council to let you know how we did throughout 2013. 2014, we made some changes to our program, so we went truly, what happened in 2013 was, we sort of used a composite rate, and we simply paid our premier hour composite rate. In 2014, we truly went self-insured. So, every time someone goes to the doctor, puts in a claim, in a particular week, we pay that claim. So, we're truly self-insured in 2014 as compared to 2013. And then, currently, in services and safety is a budget amendment for 2014 that will be coming forward to council on April the 21st, that will just be bringing us up to date. But overall, in all of our funds, just sort of to summarize, there isn't anything unusual. All of our activity came in as we had anticipated. None of our funds exceeded the appropriations. That will be good when our auditor comes in, it's one of those compliance tests that they do when they walk in the door to make sure that none of our expenditures exceeded our budget. So, with that, this is really an abbreviated presentation, and as I indicated, there is more information in the 2013 year-end financial status report. That's it.
Thank you, Diane. Any members of the council have questions for Diane? Great job. Time check, so that was 20 minutes. We're into our first hour of the agenda, so thanks so much for that. Next up, City Administrator Bob Harrison is going to give us an update on our 2013 goals.
Thanks. So, the great thing about doing this update in March is we got an extra three months before we had to come talk to you. And so, some, several of these items, you'll see as we go through them briefly, actually kind of got accomplished here in this final quarter. So, the first item, that was a council goal, was the Kohani PAA. And so, council had three items on this issue. First was to perform the Kohani annexation study, and we completed that last year. Allocate the funds in 2012, determine direction, and council action by 2013. So, as you know, we went to the BRB, we got that approved, finished the study, actually had an election in February, and the results ended up being slightly below 50% for approval of the annexation, slightly above no. And so, it's going to be one of the issues we're going to be talking about tonight, is kind of the results of that. And so, for the most part, that goal got finished in terms of what the goal actually was for 2013. The skate park goal was relocate and/or enhance a skate park, skateboard park based on the school district plans and community input. And the recreation department's been leading a fairly significant effort with public meetings. Council allocated $350,000 into 2014 budget for the building a new park, and that includes the demolition of the old park. And the Recreation Commission has made a recommendation, which came to the mayor's office today, and so we anticipate that'll be coming to council in April for an actual location, which is at Tibbetts. So, you'll be seeing that recommendation coming to council and then being referred to the appropriate committee for review. As you know, we got, actually got this done in 2012, we hired a lobbyist. And Doug Levy has been doing a lot of work, you've been getting his regular written reports on the impact of legislature. As you know, we got $5 million in the last capital budget that came, that was actually approved by the state. Not as much success this time because it ended up being no capital budget that was approved down in Olympia. But the nice thing was, Lake Sama State Park, which had been allocated for a $600,000 cut because there was no capital budget, ended up remaining at the appropriate allocation of $2.9 million. So, actually, one for losing in that case when it didn't get, when it didn't get approved. Doug is going to be coming to council to brief you on the legislative agenda and the last session that occurred at the first meeting in April. So, he'll be here for about a 10 to 15-minute presentation, but you'll be able to give him, you know, get an update and ask him some questions at that time. The IPZ zone, Innovative Partnership Zone and SWAT analysis, this is really being done by the Economic Development Department. And so, the Economic Vitality Commission did spend a lot of time in 2014, I'm sorry, 2013, actually completing the SWAT analysis. A big part of that, though, that will be helping to feed that, and you're going to hear a presentation on this tonight, is the sector analysis, which is kind of the next step that'll help fill, fill in some of the blanks for them, particularly as it relates to the Innovative Partnership Zone. And the IPZ is a technical designation from the state, which provides some, I think, some grants and some, you know?
It used to have money, but there's no allocation for the legislature anymore.
No money anymore.
But still, the, kind of the notoriety and the marketing has value.
Okay, that's good. And I'm sure you may talk about that a little more in the next presentation, Keith. And so, this is kind of really an ongoing goal. The IPC, IPZ is really designed to help identify those sectors in our local economy that have inner relationships that we'll be able to build upon. So, you think of the City of Bothell, they've really developed an Innovation Partnership Zone around life sciences, and they have several life sciences types of businesses that exist in that community. And so, this sector analysis that we've been spending quite a bit of time talking about will help to identify several of, you know, our kind of incubator businesses that will be, you know, we would anticipate developing in the future. Televi City Council Budget Meetings, did that last year, done. And I think what I heard from the council was they liked it. I think it kind of turned out okay. Develop a plan to improve traffic intersection specifically at Front and Gilman and Front and Sunset. And Front and Gilman, related to that goal was a high priority. Front and Sunset was a lower priority of the two. And the real start to that, as we went through, was how it interrelates to the I-90 interchange. And so, we've been working with our lobbyists to get an interchange justification report funded, it's about $2.1 million, in the state capital, state transportation budget, which Olympia decided not to approve this year. But that would really begin the whole analysis. So, that includes the overcrossing, which we were looking at in 12 to connect across the interstate, as well as how the interstate works at Front and 90. And so, it's the start to potentially making future improvements to the interchange. And so, getting that $2.1 million is going to be fairly significant, but it would, if the council decided in its goal-setting session later to carry this over, it's, it's really going to be a multi-year process. It's not something that's done. Develop a strategy for Route 200...
Excuse me, Bob?
Just a quick question, back when you were talking in regards to your last slide, about the justification, the interstate justification. Does that then give us more of an opportunity to get funding and grant dollars? Or is this just sort of the, we need to know where we're at basis and where we, what needs to be done?
Yes, so the, to get a project funded through federal grants, which was usually like an 80/20 split between the state and the feds, requires interchange justification report. So, if you're going to do anything to an interchange, you have to kind of start there, that's the basis. It's an initial analysis to determine what the current state is, and then, based on that, they could make future allocations to the project.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have been obviously monitoring this, Route 200, Route 928, and we have a Transportation Mobility Team made up of several of our staff, and it's cross-departmental, and working closely with Metro as, there's a vote scheduled on this coming up later this year, which King County has put forward their Plan B, if I remember correctly, in terms of the plan. And if that does pass, that will provide funding and, for several of the transit routes. Still to be determined is the impact on 200 and 928 because they are unfortunately two of the lowest ridership routes that Metro maintains. So, obviously, we're concerned about the maintenance of those routes, and if the funding for those are cut, we're going to have to do some additional analysis now of how we kind of go forward. The citywide bike and pedestrian plan, we went through a significant process last year, very open and public. We have a draft plan done, and that's actually going to be submitted to council by mid-year. We also purchased several bike racks, which are going to be installed at various locations in the city in this upcoming year. But I think the biggest thing will be this, you know, overall mobility report on the bike and ped plan that I presented to council here probably in the next two to three weeks is what we would anticipate. Becoming a five-star city, and the council member who proposed that is now the mayor. And I think what it really is, is kind of an ongoing initiative of the mayor, and his intent was that it's really a philosophical goal of service, infrastructure maintenance and improvements, and democratic values that are reflected in our everyday work. So, you can't, it's really hard to pinpoint one thing specifically that you would say, you know, that's five-star service, but I think it's the concept of how we operate as a city that the mayor's been trying to... the mayor's been trying to incorporate in his short administration. And even some of you, some of the staff that are here, may have gotten some emails from him, which has five stars after it when he recognizes some service, that's just continuing to incorporate that concept and reinforce the idea. Fireworks in July 2013. Well, we all know how that worked out. We didn't have any fireworks last year. So you may recall in the 2012 budget, we actually ended up not funding the fireworks for 2013. One of the items, I guess, on the second bullet that I'll just touch on is that council at that time was concerned whether or not individuals could do a private fireworks show if there was a neighborhood association or an organization that wanted to hold that. And there is a provision in our code that would allow for a special event permit to be pulled and a private organization to actually hold a fireworks show if they chose to. Lake Sammamish State Park, this has been an ongoing process with the state. One, we secured funding for the beach restoration, boardwalk and bathhouse, which I talked about earlier, $2.9 million, and they're anticipating that project's going to go forward here this year. They've actually submitted a letter to the city requesting annexation of the state park into the city of Issaquah. And working with our Economic Development Department, the state issued a request for conceptual proposals on potential partnerships between organizations and the private sector or nonprofit sector. And we're currently conducting a financial analysis and service analysis of those proposals. Regional center designation. We have submitted an application for that regional center designation. It did go to the Growth Management Policy Commission, and currently it's going to be reviewed by the PSRC by the end of 2014. So if there's any more specific questions on that, I'm going to rely on my expert, Trish Heinonen, here, who may have some more information on where we are in the process. But the good news is, we got the regional center designation application done, submitted, and we're probably halfway through this kind of two-year approval process. Public lands inventory, that's been done by the staff. We actually have a map, and we anticipate that it'll be submitted to the land and shore committee with some recommendations on potential parcels here by mid-year. You may recall what council had asked to do on this goal was identify all the city-owned property that was in the city and do a review as to whether or not it made sense for the city to continue to own it, or if there's a potential repurposing of that property. We would come back to the council and provide some recommendations on that. What we found is the majority of the land that we own is either designated open space or utility or rights of way in the streets. I think there are a couple parcels that there may be some opportunities for consideration, maybe affordable housing development or something along those lines. But the land and shore committee will be able to look at that recommendation later this year. Enhance the Rainier Trail, this has been kind of an ongoing process, and unfortunately, I can't tell you that I can put a check mark next to it and say it's done. I think it is an ongoing process. We have done and significantly enhanced police focus of the area, and our actual, I think, responses to that area have increased. Part of that conversation has been removing the skate park, and as we talked about earlier, we actually got funding that was put into the budget for that, and there's going to be a recommendation on moving that. And we also developed a partnership with the Issaquah Community Network, and they kind of put together kind of a take-back-the-trail program. So Barbara D. Michelle was involved with that, and they set up kind of a walking program on a regular basis to just walk the trail and provide a more steady influence and some eyes on some of the activity that was going on there. And they partnered with the police department. So if they saw something that was going on, they would contact the police department, let them know if they saw some activity that needed some additional focus. Financial information and agenda bills. The current agenda bills do include financial information. I think the council focus on this was to try and make that financial information a little bit more uniform. And so one of the challenges that we've had is how they interrelate with some of the financial systems. And so there's going to be an agenda bill later this year for council to authorize the purchase of the new financial system, Munis, and that will go a long way to being able to upgrade the financial information provided to council on agenda bills or just in general. And that's it. Yes?
If I may. You mentioned earlier the overcrossing. That was actually a city goal. It wasn't specifically delineated on this list this evening, but there was a goal last year that was approved. It was the final one that we approved at the retreat. It survived the final round of cuts.
So that's a 2014 goal?
That was a goal.
So this was our 2013 goal wrap-up?
But it was mentioned earlier in terms of the ongoing work. And I believe it's been, well, it's been a goal probably in 2010, 11, 12, 13, somewhere in those range of years. I guess my question is, when you mentioned about the intersections at Front and Gilman and Front and Sunset, I understand that Front and Gilman and the overcrossing to some extent require the IJR. And that has to be done at a state level, and our hands are a little tied until we get there. Front and Sunset, not necessarily. We've got the potential flashing yellow going in later this year, which will hopefully improve operations at that intersection, so I think we are doing something. But I guess beyond the IJR, is there anything as a city that we can be doing to improve those issues regarding mobility? Whether it's the intersection at Front and Gilman, whether it's working towards getting an overcrossing, or is it just, we literally can't do anything, our hands are shackled until that IJR funds those come through?
Well, so I think our engineer isn't here, but I think what he would probably say is that Front Street obviously acts as a bottleneck for regional traffic going through. And so right now, there are really two entryway points into that, both on Sunset and Front, and then directly on Two-Front. So Exit 18 and Exit 17, and they interrelate. The IJR report will help influence some of the recommendations on how we're able to go forward. The overcrossing will have a significant impact primarily on 900, with some of the initial analysis that we saw. The other alternative would be, how do you get traffic that's bypassing Issaquah around this intersection over here? And council had a long debate over that, kind of general bypass issue over the past. And so that would be, you know, one of the challenges in terms of the design is how do you kind of move traffic out of that bottleneck which is located there at Sunset and Front. So other than dealing with the IJR at this point, there's no thinking, I think, about how you would kind of transition the traffic there, unless you can find some way to kind of get the traffic out of that intersection and pass there.
So it's pretty much all the IJR?
It's, yes.
Any other questions? Nino?
Thank you. I just had a small housekeeping comment on goal number 12. To be more accurate, the regional center, it's a regional growth center because there are other kinds of centers. Well, there's one other kind. So to clarify, that would be more informative.
Thank you. That was the intent, and I appreciate the clarification. Any other questions or comments for Bob? Okay, thank you, Bob. Next up, as logically follows, item number C is item number B.
Keith Niven with your Economic Development Department. And I think where we're leading you this evening is kind of working our way from expenditures, revenues, to past goals, to kind of talking about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that were evaluated by the Economic Vitality Commission last year. And then eventually working our way towards emerging trends to kind of get you towards thinking about upcoming goal-setting sessions. So to remind you, the Economic Vitality Commission made a presentation to you last summer. It was a June COW, where they talked about their SWOT analysis. And I thought I would go ahead and start with some current events, and that was this article that came out in The Times on the 24th, Boeing seeks east side space for engineers. So that's a great story. And as your Economic Development Director, I get inundated by emails, calls, and other things, asking, "This would be great if this located in Issaquah. Let's get that to happen." So what I would say to you is that we still have some issues to work through in terms of our economic profiling before bigger companies, I think, look at us on par with Bellevue, Redmond, and some of the other employment destinations. We'll get to that in a second. So that's my lead-in to going through kind of our recap of the SWOT analysis with you. And so what I'm going to do is just basically kind of read through these, and I'll try and do it quickly because I know we're trying to stay on schedule. So the threats. So the threats are the internal and external forces with the potential to threaten our resources, opportunities, and values. And the threats that were identified by the commission are resource limitations of capital land and workforce threaten the economic growth and stability of our community. Growing competition from neighboring communities threaten the strength of the existing job base. The changing and unpredictable regional and global economic influences threaten and challenge the city's revenue stability. Shifts towards living proximate to work threaten the city's demographic diversity. If you guys want an explanation of any of these, I'd be glad to give you that. The loss of focus on flexible and future-oriented economic policies threaten achieving our vision. Shrinking regional transportation budgets threaten access and further business development. So now on to opportunities. And opportunities are our assets or circumstances that demonstrate a potential for growth or improvement. So the first one, Issaquah's strong education sector fosters vitality and attracts an influential demographic. The second one, the city's commitment to its economic prosperity by forming the Economic Development Department and the Economic Vitality Commission. The third, Issaquah benefits from our regional spinoffs from being part of a prosperous region. The fourth, Issaquah's character attracts the entrepreneurial and innovative demographic necessary for healthy economic development. Next, land use and economic development policy is a tool for attracting and maintaining businesses. The outdoor recreational amenities appeal to a growing northwest demographic. And the growing arts and cultural district fosters a unique community asset. Next is weaknesses. Weaknesses are what puts us at a disadvantage relative to other communities. First one, mobility options are limited by geography, lack of funding, and state and city transportation and transit policies. Second, the undefined economic base limits employment opportunities. And that kind of strikes to, I think, one of the two things here in this weaknesses list, I think, strike to why Boeing stopped their search at Eastgate. The next one, city economic maturity is in transition between youth and adulthood. The next one is the value proposition to locate a business in Issaquah has not been packaged and sold. So in other words, if you look at the second and fourth one under weaknesses, when we talked to the agent at CBRE, which was handling the site selection for Boeing, they basically said that Issaquah is too far east for them, and that really they were stopping their look along the I-90 corridor at Eastgate. And I think part of, and that is a story that we've heard a number of times from different site selectors, and we can look at bookings.com, they landed in Eastgate. Basically, Issaquah in the region is still perceived as being out in the hinterland. And that's really kind of what was identified by the commission under part of our weaknesses. And the last item under weaknesses, the high cost of living and doing business in Issaquah relative to the size of its market are disincentives to locate in town. And then last is strengths. Strengths are what we have that can be built upon or leveraged. First one, many in the community care and are involved in civic affairs. Second, regional transportation system provides a large capture area for jobs and retail sales. Third, Issaquah is a nice place to live. Fourth, the high concentration of talented and highly educated people. And last, Issaquah is at an inflection point with an opportunity to grow. So where that leads us is basically to a set of six economic policy considerations, and they are kind of categorized in these different categories.
Excuse me, Keith?
Yes, sorry.
Before you proceed, Tola, you have a question?
I did. What do you mean that we're at inflection point?
I think if you think about it, Issaquah is at a place right now where, you know, if you think about what Redmond is, Redmond is Microsoft and Nintendo and all sorts of things. Bellevue is growing, Seattle has a certain image, Kirkland has a certain image. Issaquah right now, in terms of its economic base, is somewhat undefined. So we're at a point where we're kind of deciding to grow in a certain way, and we have the ability. And because we're kind of last to the table, I think we have opportunities that maybe others didn't have. They just kind of evolved in a certain way, and I think we can be more kind of thoughtful in how we want to grow our economic community. So we're at that point where I think we're about, we feel like, you know, we've been growing, we've had these kind of master plan communities over the past 10 to 15 years that have just kind of exploded, and we've just approved a sub-area plan for central Issaquah. And, you know, we've got kind of all this stuff that's just about to happen, but it's just about to happen. It hasn't happened yet. And so we're at that point where it feels like we're about to step onto the next ledge.
So before you continue, could you go back one slide?
I can.
Thank you. So the wording on this is slightly different. I was trying to rationalize it with an earlier version that I have. One of the areas it says up there, so I have a couple of questions about some of these threat, second from the end. The loss of focus on flexible and future-oriented economic policies threatens achieving our vision. Could you be more, give me a couple examples?
So there was a lot of concern, I think, when the SWOT was being done, it was right on the heels of the central Issaquah plan getting adopted. And I think there was a feeling that the council bought into a vision. It was a long-term vision, and it was a very progressive vision for this community. And I think the concern here was that you have to kind of stick to that if you want to see it through to kind of what's perceived to be a prosperous end. And I think the concern was kind of losing that focus over the next two to three to five years in the short term, when maybe we're not seeing a lot of progress in change for the central Issaquah plan area. Yes?
Okay, so that was a forward-looking fear of loss of focus?
I think so. That's my recollection, and I'll ask Matt if he remembers anything other than that potentially for that one. Okay, so we're going to go with that for now.
And the ender weaknesses.
Yes.
Your second one, you addressed it, but I'm still unclear. The undefined economic base. Now, when you gave examples of the other areas, you named businesses that were there. So we can name businesses. So I don't quite, you know, I don't know what an undefined economic base, because then your explanation was about identity and the perception of people from the outside.
So part of it is, as Bob mentioned earlier, talking about the IPZs. So right now, so I'm going to use Redmond as example. You know, Redmond is known as having a very strong kind of high-tech base. And so they market and they seek out companies that do business with Microsoft, that maybe have a relationship to Digipen. There's a number of companies that locate in Microsoft because of that perceived strength of high-tech. And similar to Bothell, you know, Bothell is Philips, it's all the kind of medical hardware equipment that also do work for Boeing, and they've actually found, and that's why they located in Bothell, is because they're the same manufacturers who do things for Boeing can also do things for healthcare. And so what we have in our community, clearly we have Costco, clearly we have Swedish as a major employer, we have a lot of retailers, we have a lot of very small a major employer, we have a lot of retailers, we have a lot of very small niche businesses, but we don't really have a, we don't really have a defined kind of base where if you were, you know, one of the, one of the comments, so about a year and a half ago, Brooks moved their headquarters for their company, I think it was from Bothell to Seattle or it was, they basically moved internal to the region. And somebody said, well, why didn't we go after Brooks? Wouldn't it have been great if, if Brooks's headquarters would have been in Issaquah? And okay, maybe that's great, maybe it's not great. You know, the question is, is if we perceive ourselves as having a, an economic base that relies on maybe outdoor recreation, and that's one of the things that we think we probably have a propensity for just because of our location, well then yes, it would be great if Brooks, or if we could get, you know, REI to move from Kent here, that's not going to happen. But, you know, those are the kind of things that I think you can start to work on if you've defined kind of what you want to focus your economic base on. And right now I think we're undefined.
Okay, so you're not saying it's just waiting to be captured because someone needs to look at it? I mean, and just in terms of industry sectors and their relative density here, there isn't an ecosystem around, like you mentioned, high tech that may exist in Redmond. So, I mean, it's just that. And okay, so, so that identity of, you know, software, high tech, Redmond, because of the ecosystem that, and the focus on that industry segment, that doesn't exist here. It's not just a matter of us defining what's here. So that, I get that.
Okay.
And one other thing, in the, let me look at this again. In this version, I think, I think a very important strength that I don't see in here is strong education system. So I'm not sure, it looks like the word, words maybe got smiffed a little bit, but this earlier version you had given me, just one of the bullet points is strong education system. And I took that as a reference to our school district, right? So as we, as we continue to, you know...
And right now it's listed as an opportunity. So, so we see it as being...
Oh, that was, that was in a strength before, okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so is that a reference, do you think, both to, to the school district and/or?
Bellevue.
Bellevue College? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for that discussion about the defined economic base, because I was wondering about that too. And, and to contribute to the conversation, I can see where having a strong brand, say an outdoor industry could also feed to our tourism industry. But we also may benefit from having a diversity in our economic base rather than being all into one basket. I wanted to ask about the number four on threats, where you paused and said, ask questions if you don't know. And I actually didn't know what you meant by shifting living proximate to work threatening the demographic diversity.
So this one relates to, so as the baby boomers are aging and the next generation and the generation after that are showing some differences in living preferences, not only changes in their desire to maybe drive as soon as they possibly can, but also, you know, desires to live in more urban settings. To give you an example, when we were talking with Microsoft about the land that they bought in Issaquah back in 2000, you know, their vision for developing was basically the same as it was in, at the time in Redmond, which is, you know, we want to build a campus that's four-story buildings, it's very suburban, we're taking kids out of college and putting them directly into a business and we want that setting for them. Well, flash forward, you know, a decade, and now where Microsoft is locating is in much more urban settings in downtown Bellevue, downtown Seattle. You can look at the entire, you know, Amazon complex at South Lake Union. The young professionals are seeking more urban experiences for their, not only where they want to live, but where they want to work. And so what this is saying is that if indeed there is a larger sector of our populace that's wanting to live in more urban locations, that if we stay the way we are today, which is much more of a suburban community, then we may lose out on a large portion of the population which would choose Belltown or downtown Bellevue or some other location over Issaquah in terms of a place to live. That's what that's kind of referring to.
Thank you.
Okay, so last slide. Maybe? Okay, so at the end of the day, I think where all this heads is there's really kind of six categories of kind of economic policy considerations for us to think about. Transportation infrastructure, workforce, retention incentives, arts, culture, environment and entertainment, city administration and attraction and marketing. And with that, I'm going to say I'm done. Sorry about that.
Hold on, hold on. I so appreciate your sensitivity to the, to the, to the clock, but could you give, give me a little bit more about what you just said?
Sure. So if you take, if you take the work that was done with the SWOT and all the things on the previous slide, you can basically now organize them into these six categories. And I think each of these categories has a very kind of serious implication on our economic future. And so I think that's what this is beginning to do. This is the next step for the Economic Vitality Commission as they work through setting goals for the strategic plan that they're working on. So basically, this set of six kind of categories is now becoming then an organizing principle for what goals and strategies would come out of their strategic planning efforts. So, so this is, and I think what this will do is be kind of some seeds for the conversation that Bob's going to have with you next in terms of kind of the emerging issues. Some of them are here and some of them, because this is really just the economic leg of the stool, there are some that are, you know, in other places.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Keith? Thanks Keith, nice segue Bob. Thank you very much. Now, to wrap up this part of the agenda, item number A, emerging issues.
So this is pretty broad. It's going to be like this picture over here, 10,000 feet. Now, you know, there may be some things that we talk about in this presentation tonight that you want to spend a little more time on or go and delve into a little bit further. And there's lots of time and opportunity that we'll be able to talk about some of these things in broader detail and kind of what they mean. But we did want to just kind of lay out some of the very conceptual items. Some of these are, you'll see are very challenging, like climate change. I mean, that's a global issue that has some local impacts and we are working very, we have a very diligent carbon footprint reduction plan. But are we going to solve climate change, you know, doing our little part? Probably not, but we can certainly contribute and it's going to have impacts to our community. So you'll see that as we kind of go through this presentation. So, I'm sorry, I gotta stand by the microphone. First off is financial sustainability. As you saw in the quarterly report, year end report that our finance director just did, you know, the city has a lot of economic strengths. We have a broad and diverse tax base. We have, you know, solid revenues are coming in, we've continued to maintain and control our expenditures. However, we continue to have future anticipated expenses that we're going to have that we need to anticipate into the future. So if you start to look at issues like the Highlands or Talis, that infrastructure is approximately 15 years old now. And so as we kind of go forward, we need to have a plan in place to be able to fund the maintenance, the future maintenance and replacement of the infrastructure that got built in that area. In terms of our operating budget, we've got to be cognizant of what mandates come and have an impact upon the city. So for example, you know, the city used to receive sales tax revenues on every sale that happened out of Costco.com because we were the nexus point for that. When they changed the sales tax law, we essentially lost about a million dollars a year in revenue because of the way that the, the law changed. And it got replaced by sales tax mitigation, but it still didn't, you know, take place, take the place of the full impact of that change in the law. And most recently, there is a law passed by Congress, which is essentially the Internet Fairness Act. And if that ends up replacing the state sales tax mitigation, you know, that will get reduced even further by about half a million dollars a year in terms of what we receive from internet sales within the community relative to, to the sales tax mitigation. So when you start to look at, you know, challenges that receiving, that we're receiving in terms of federal and state mandates on municipalities and cities, you know, we are going to be facing some long-term challenges in the budget. One of the great strengths that we have though is the diversity of our tax base. So, oh, we did talk about the fact we don't necessarily have a mothership, you know, here that we can point to. Being diverse from, we have a very strong retail sector and being diverse in terms of the types of businesses that we have helps to minimize to some extent the volatility that we see in certain budgets. So, you know, if we were a community that was, say, completely relying upon residential houses and you saw a drop in property values there, that impact is going to be felt on the individuals who live, the homeowners in that community. So it's one of the strengths that we have too. Oops, went the wrong way. In terms of capital facilities, there's several items that have taken place over the years or in the planning stages. This building, for example, was the police station and the second floor of that got captured for a portion, a portion of the city hall. But the police department, if you go downstairs, you'll see they're kind of burgeoning at the seams and they're ready to grow up into that second floor. That has some impact on the office workers that are located up on the second floor of that facility. We have a master site plan that got adopted, which essentially plans that the parks and recreation facility shop has to be moved because it's going to be redeveloped as a park. And so there is an impact and future impact on how we finance and how we make that part of the master site plan come true. There's this facility, you know, our IT infrastructure that's located in this facility is probably not as secure as we would like it to be and provide some of the redundancy that we would like it to provide. And so as we start to look at, you know, how this building fits in with the overall plan, there's really a need overall for, you know, a kind of a general capital facilities plan and how that interrelates to future investments that the city's going to make overall in the community. Eastside Fire and Rescue. As you know, we just adopted an ILA last year, we're continuing for another seven years with our surrounding five communities. But there's challenges underlying the partnership. One of those is our community has seen an increase over the last three and a half years, four years of nearly a million dollars. Our, our increase next year in overall contributions is going up by about half a million dollars. And that's just by virtue of how District 10 ended up relocating their fire station to May Valley Road and the redistribution of assessed valuation within the service areas that each station serves. So, you know, long-term, we can't continue to afford half million dollar increases on an annual basis or a couple of years ago, $250,000 increase in that. It's, you know, it starts to impact and eat away at some of our other services. You know, we will soon be approaching a point in the long-term, if you see the trend line continuing that way, that our property, our property tax rate will essentially be eaten up by paying the fire service. So that means all of our other services essentially in the city are going to have to be financed by sales taxes or other revenue sources. The other challenge that we have here is we're not the sole entity that controls the budget. We're one of five partners that are within that area. Two of those partners, District 38 and District 10, are facing some challenges, financial challenges. They're looking at creating a regional fire authority as District, so that's also, you know, some impact in terms of the future financial viability of that department. And as we went through and did that analysis last year, when Samanish raised this issue of whether, and other communities raised this issue of continuation of the ILA, and we did an evaluation of our services that we're able to provide independently as a city, we found that while every area in the city is able to be served within our level service measures, there were probably a desire, particularly in the Providence Point area, to provide a slightly higher level service on medic runs that are currently provided out of the Kohani Station, that we would prefer to perhaps provide a slightly higher level service. So we were looking at options and opportunities if the Providence Point was no longer served out of the Kohani Station and what that service level would start to look at. So we do have seven years in terms of what the existing ILA is. The question is, what happens in seven years? And so we'll, over the next seven-year basis, we're going to have to continue to do evaluation of how we provide service in the community and whether or not our existing station locations, bases and service methods on fire and EMS continue to make sense or not. The central Issaquah plan, as you can see, it was adopted December 17th, 2012, became effective April 29th, 2013. And so as we approach a year, you know, we've got some questions. It's time to take a measure of where we are and how effective some of the concepts were. We've been able to market test some of the plans over the past year and see whether or not, you know, what we put in as a conceptual basis or recommended basis on some of the analysis that we received. You know, we've had the opportunity to kind of market test that for a year and understand what's going on regionally. And so, you know, we want to continue to evaluate the central Issaquah plan and our marketing efforts and understand what's happening in the greater region. So a lot of the central Issaquah plan, not only does it include residences, but also includes office space. So understanding what you heard in the earlier presentation from our economic development director is, you know, what is the attractiveness and continued potential redevelopment of office space in our community and as that relates to the central Issaquah plan. So those are one of the larger issues as we continue to, to work through that. I know the council's talked a lot about this over the last few years, is what is our level of regional influence? And what, as we continue to find what we are as a community, and we've continued to grow from a small community of 5,000 people to a community that's approaching 35,000 people, you know, what role do we want to play regionally with our efforts? What's our relationship and our partnerships going to be with our neighboring communities? You know, the urban regional growth center designation is a big part of that. And that's a, that's a defined status that we've been seeking on a regional basis. It's going to be important to future funding and grants that we'll receive. So overall regional influence is going to be important. And one of the things that the council did a couple of years ago was hire the lobbyist. And we're starting to see real impacts down in Olympia now by the result of the fact that we got a voice there and the council's adopted a legislative agenda over the past couple of years. And we've actually had some real movement in accomplishing some of the goals that we had in our legislative agenda. Light rail. As we know, and was presented at the council meeting last month, the, when light rail opens in 2023, it's going to have an impact on metro bus, you know, regional bus service within the city and how people are going to be interacting with the metro system. But most importantly is that light rail has been, has, has shown on a regular basis to have a very significant economic impact on communities. So we're already seeing in the Bell Red corridor and certain areas of Redmond that are going to have light rail stations, that property development, property acquisitions and the redevelopment of those properties in a very significant way are starting to occur. And, you know, how, what that means to our economic competitiveness in this region, what that means for future jobs and growth in our region, and how that interrelates with the central Issaquah plan are all very important as we continue to focus on this. the Centralist Squad Plan are all very important as we continue to focus on this. It's, while, you know, 2023 is a long way off, you know, I think we, as a community, need to continue to take steps to make sure that we remain viable from a transportation mobility standpoint and that we continue to fit in with the greater region as we're looking at this. And so I-90 has a big part in this overall concept, too. So we talked about this a little earlier. It probably don't even have to show you a picture. It's probably burned fresh in your minds what Front Street looks like at times. And so regional mobility is a concern, you know, we have. One of the challenges we have is we're, is our geography. It's one of the real strengths that we have, too, but we're a pinch point going through, you know, Tiger and Squawk and Cougar Mountains. And so we're still seeing continued growth. Imagine what happens when Black Diamond, if that ever, if that project ever gets off the ground and we add, you know, 5,000 or 6,000 residences to that potential corridor and that traffic gets dumped on Isqwa-Hobart Road, what's the impact going to be on our, you know, the regional impact of regional traffic on our local community? And it's not completely fair for our community to bear the full brunt of regional traffic, but by virtue of the fact of geography and the fact that I-90 runs through the middle of our community, it does have an impact. And so there are opportunities, I think, to both, to work at the state level, to work at the county level, and to frankly, work with some of our neighboring communities that have an impact on our regional traffic as well. You know, the reality is growth is coming. By 2040, some of the projections in, in the general region show that we're anticipating 1.3 million new people, not in our community, but regionally, to, to come to the greater King County region. That includes 985,000 new jobs and 607,000 new households that'll be coming to this area. And so we need strong freight mobility jobs and the impact of international commerce and, you know, the real strength that we have of being kind of a gateway to the Pacific and Asia is going to continue to become more and more important. And you're seeing those issues play out in certain parts of the state that they're looking at, you know, how they're going to transport coal to, you know, outside of the, you know, the general region. Some of those mobility issues are going to be issues that we'll be dealing with locally. Affordable housing. Housing costs, even with the Great Recession that we saw from 2007 to 2010, have still increased in average of 20% between 2004 and 2013. If some of you may recall, Arthur Sullivan did his presentation on the Centralist Squad Plan and he, and he's a director of ARCH, and what he indicated is the numbers that he is seeing now in terms of overall growth on the east side of the cost of housing is comparable to what was happening when the tech sector was developing in the Bay Area. And so we're starting to see those types of growth rates and average values of homes in our community and on the east side. So, but you look at some of the jobs that we have here, you know, we have a very strong retail base, but a lot of those jobs aren't necessarily paying at the level that is necessary to be able to afford a single-family home. So the question is, you know, what does affordable housing look like? Does it remain a value? And Isqwa has been a leader in affordable housing, not, not only in the state, but frankly, on a national basis. As of 2011, 5% of our housing stock was low-income housing, essentially below the 50% threshold identified by Community Development Block Grant, and 12.8% was moderate, or was moderate income housing at 50 to 80%. In our comprehensive plan, our goal is to have 24% of our housing stock to be low-income housing and 17% to be moderate income housing. So when you measure what our goal, our planning goal is relative to what our, you know, the actual outcomes to date, we're seeing a gap within that. Also, we're seeing a real severe cost burden increase in rents to people who live in our community. Essentially, the cost burden, so that's defined as those who pay more than 50% of their income towards housing, that rose from 13% in 2000 to 21% in 2010. So that's continuing to be a kind of a general issue, I think, on the east side. Lastly, married couple families with children has a defined household type in our community. And I think it, you know, comes back to what Council President Winterstein said, we have, one of our strongest assets is our school system. And so people, when they have children, want to move to our community. And so there's a, there's a definite impact that that has, both in our schools and our community. But it also has an impact, you know, one of the questions we talked about is the 20-somethings, you know, 20-year-olds. Is this an attractive place for them to, to live and work or not? Are we, you know, defining our, our residents by virtue of their, you know, the school age of their children and whether they continue to live here, you know, in the long term or not? Technology infrastructure. Again, this is one of those things that I think we're seeing trends on a national basis. There's this whole concept that has been talked about for a long time, but I think it's becoming more and more a reality, this aspect of the tech, the internet of things. So your toasters, your refrigerators, your heating and air conditioning controls will all be connected to the internet. We'll all have the ability to make changes in energy usage and, you know, in electricity usage on their own. And so that begs the question, do we have the infrastructure in place to be able to manage, you know, the future? And there's a later slide that talks about the fact that some of that's out of our control. A lot of that is provided by private utilities. You know, the other aspect is, you know, what are people's expectations? My four-year-old knows how to use my internet, my iPhone, you know, which is amazing. And so imagine in 15 years what it's going to be like for her and what her expectations of what a community is and what those expectations of the children of today are going to be facing down, down the road and in the future. And, you know, are we, do we have the technology infrastructure? Are we going to be able to afford to make the investments in the technology infrastructure in our community to be able to accommodate that? And frankly, it's going to become a, a level of competition and competitiveness issue for those communities that can afford to make that investment versus those communities that can't. And lastly, on this issue is, how are we providing services to our residents that are very tech savvy nowadays? So, you know, just to give you a very basic one, utility payments can't be made online. I mean, most of us do our banking online nowadays, and so we can't, you know, in our financial system that we currently have, we, or maybe it's just a policy, we don't allow that. So, you know, and it's one of the biggest complaints, I think, that we hear from our customers is, I can't even make a, you know, utility payment online. I'd like to be able to do that, or in some cases, even pay with a credit card. So, you know, we got to make sure our, our financial policies and our infrastructure that we have can meet the needs of the future and frankly, the needs of today. I think one of the greatest assets that we have in our community that we've seen is the amount of diversity that's developed in our community. So, but there's also some challenges here, too. The 20 to 64-year-old age group is decreasing, even though we talked about earlier, people come here for the schools, but that same rate of the over 64 age group is increasing. And that change has been about 3% in each group. But the challenge we're going to face is just as a society, we're continuing, we're continuing to live longer and we're continuing to age. And so that starts to have impacts on our zoning code, the, the infrastructure that we have in place. I can remember a budget meeting where Councilman Member Scher brought up this law where we were going to have to change out all of our street signs to make them large face type. And the cost to do that was, you know, if I remember, it was close to half a million dollars just to change out all of the street signs within the city to meet the new federal standards. So there are real impacts as we start to think about, you know, people aging in place. Do we have the public facilities and the public infrastructure necessary to support those individuals to do that? We have a very diverse population. Approximately 20.4% of our population is foreign-born and 21.6% of households speak a language other than English at home. I remember I went to International Day at my son's school and, which is in the Isqwa School District, and there were over 27 different nationalities that were represented at that school, that elementary school. Just absolutely amazing, the amount of diversity that we have. On the other hand, we still have a real demand for services from families in need, and that's increasing. And the Human Services has been, Commission has been kind of reporting that out to us. And there is the challenge that started with Mayor Friesinger and has continued with Mayor Butler, that we increase our funding for Human Services to a $10 per capita level. And we're still working on that challenge. I think we're at $9 this year. But to give you an example of one of our nonprofit partners, the Isqwa Food Bank served 15,742 families in, in 2012, which was an increase of approximately 10.7% over the previous year. So as we're still seeing impacts at the federal level, when they're cutting food stamps and, and seeing some continued reductions in the, the social safety net, again, where do those people live? They live in our town and other people's towns, and so the impact of those federal decisions are being felt on a local basis. Jobs. So we, we tackled this head-on with the creation of an Economic Development Department and creation of Economic Vitality Commission. And we are continuing to find and strive for a balance of jobs and housing and what that should look like within the community. This is one of the best assets that, that we have that got created here. It is, it is, and it, and it will continue to be an economic driver for our community and the potential jobs and that will come from that and future innovation and the impact of, as we continue to get more office development and new business starts, this is a big part of our future. You know, the fact that we're looking at developing, doing a development agreement with Costco and they're retaining their corporate headquarters and doing a very significant potential expansion in our community, again, just in conversation standpoint, bodes well for our future economic health. One of the, you know, one of the concerns would be full reliance upon this, the, you know, the residential homeowners or taxpayers on a community so that economic, you know, providing jobs for those individuals and partnership with the private sector and then providing tax base for our community so it's not purely relying upon the individual homeowner is very important. We talked, I talked a little bit about this, and I think we've been one of the worldwide leaders, frankly, in our sustainability efforts, but we're going to see impact on water resources, on global temperature, in coastal areas, human health. We're seeing migrations of diseases that are showing up in places that have never shown up before because now the weather is warm enough for those, you know, those bacteria or insects or parasites to actually survive up in colder weather climates. And so those impacts are going to continue to have future impacts on us as a region and as a community. And so we've got to be cognizant of that and own those, that piece of it that is local We are heavily dependent upon private utilities to provide certain basic infrastructure services to our community, electric and gas. We've heard kind of anecdotal reports from some of our businesses in the community that there's some unreliability of the electric power. Some of you who may own, you know, generators at home because you've experienced gaps and your electricity service may testify to that. But we're working with Puget Sound Energy to make sure that future investment that we're seeing in the electric infrastructure maintains a, you know, remains a focus as they look at making regional investments in their whole electrical grid. We talked a little about, a little bit about broadband service and making sure our telecommunication and fiber optic systems and wireless connectivity remain consistent with what people expect in the 21st century. That at 10,000 feet is it. It's a broad list? Is it, you know, something that, you know, we got into very specifics about? No, but I think any of these could be a conversation at a cow at some point. We'd go into a lot more of the data and the potential policy impacts of these items.
Any questions or comments for Bob? So I, I want to thank you and, and we, we specifically requested that the council hear what's on the administration's mind about emerging issues. So as we're forming our goals for upcoming, you know, selection of, of next year's goals, you know, I think this is a good, a good package of information for us to consider. Thank you, Bob. Thanks for putting that together. And next time, we're going to limit you to five items.
It was a long list and we pared that one down, so it was a challenge.
Okay, thank you. So we can now move on to the next item in our agenda, and I believe, Bob, that our...
So the great thing about my, about this item, which is Kohani, is I'm going to be able to turn it over to Trish to do the presentation as we kind of go through here, but we'll tag team as needed, but Trish is going to take the lead on, on doing this.
Okay. So here we are again, talking about Kohani. We met two weeks ago with the council work session and we talked a lot about the next options for you all after the vote failed. And you all talked about either transferring all of it away or looking at a smaller new boundary that you couldn't quite describe. You had different attributes that you hoped it could be or might be or perhaps could be, and then sent us a way to figure out maybe a new boundary. And then we met the next night with Land and Shore, and they also talked about a new boundary, not knowing what it would be, not knowing if it even existed, that it would work, but asking us to, in a couple of days, I think it was maybe nine, 10 days, if we could sort of do a quick back of the napkin, is there a smaller boundary that would work? We couldn't use any outside help. It had to be done in-house quickly. Find out all the answers and bring us a smaller boundary. And we said, okay then, we'll do our best. And so this is what you have before you, the proposed new smaller boundary. And what we looked at, first I'm going to show you the words because once you see the picture, then, you know, everyone's brain goes in a different place. It met some of the criteria that we heard was, it was within the 60% approval threshold from the vote. That seemed like a hot one. We did not split the Kohani Master Site Plan from the other neighborhoods, so the Kohani Homeowners Association is intact. We didn't separate that with the proposed new boundary. It includes almost all of the high school, Isqwa High School boundary, except for one small subdivision, the Rainbow Lake Ranch. There's no change in the city's responsibility for Isqwa Pine Lake Road that, as you probably know, is already in our TIP. It's already our, in our control and improvements are already in the TIP for that section of the road, the road that goes north. The new boundary decreases the city responsibility in Isqwa Fall City road improvements. As several of you mentioned, we don't have an estimate to what those improvements cost, but this boundary would have a lesser impact on our responsibility. So I don't have a number for you. I just know that this boundary would be less. It's approximately 530 homes, 1,500 people live there, 5.36 road miles. The reason we had to find this out, again, back of the napkin, is police wanted to know how many homes were there and how many people were there. Public Works Operations wanted to know how many, how much road mileage there were, there was, just to see if we could serve it. And, and of course we can. 500 homes, it would be like a new subdivision. It would be like, is being proposed, like the Mole subdivision, the Tallahassee subdivisions. It would be all those new subdivisions. So of course we could serve it with a little help here and there, but it's not a huge, huge undertaking for, to take over 530-some homes. And generally, when we did again, the back of the napkin and we went up against the state criteria for annexation and the city's criteria for annexation, it generally met all of them, give or take that we couldn't really do an in-depth observation analysis on the, the smaller... in-depth observation analysis on the smaller boundary. And so with that, this is the proposed new boundary that fits the criteria that I just mentioned. It includes, I don't have a, the little light, but as you see the entrance... There. Really high-tech. The subdivision to the north of that, there's two vacant lots. The subdivision to the north of that is what they call Rainbow Lake Ranch. That's the part that's not included. That's the part that's in the Isqwa High School boundary. That's the only part of all the new neighborhoods that, that is not included. The rest of the newer neighborhoods that are not part of Klahani, per se, the Master Site Plan, would be included in this, and the Eastside Christian Assembly Church to the south. That's what we did in our eight or nine days that we had to do the analysis. I can come back to that. But just so you know, you know, tonight you get to talk about it, ask questions, if you have any edits to the boundary or changes to the boundary. And then April 7th is when you all get to decide on the docket for the comprehensive plan, which, in which this is embedded. When Land and Shore met last week already, or was it two weeks ago now? It seems like yesterday. They changed, they recommended a change in the Klahani PAA docket item to say, it's in the italics, "to update the comprehensive plan to potentially release part or all of the Klahani PAA, as well as prepare materials for a potential annexation of a smaller subset of the PAA." So that's in the Agenda Bill, coming back to you all for action on the 7th. And do you have any questions for me on the boundary or the criteria? Or, oh, Bob has, okay?
Well, the tag team, yeah, that's right. So I think the, the big thing, going back to this, that we tasked the staff to evaluate, and it was really the entire senior leadership team that took a look at this and planning, took the lead, I'm sorry, DSD took the lead in putting this together, was what, based on the criterion that is there for the Growth Management Act and our own boundary, and our own criterion locally, what makes sense? So even though we previously saw there were some sections that had over a greater 60% yes vote, you know, in terms of precinct maps, you know, it, what we tried to do was just look at this from a strictly service area and what made sense to meet the criterion. And so while we're not recommending, or not recommending necessarily that this is it, but what we used was, I just want to make sure you understand, we used a strict criterion as we went through and kind of did this evaluation. And this was ultimately what kind of got produced as a result of that evaluation. And as you said, I mean, you start to look at the overall homes that are produced as a result of this boundary. It is like a larger new development that would occur in the city. The big difference being that a new development that would occur in the city, you would typically see new sales taxes get generated, and these individuals are probably already paying sales taxes within our communities. So you'd really only be looking at the property, new property tax revenue that would get generated out of this service area.
Is that your, okay.
That's my, that's my, well, comment for now.
So questions, comments, starting with Mary Lou?
I actually want to thank staff, because I think this is exactly what we were asking you to do in the timeframe that you did it. And it's very interesting to me to see what you came up with. So I can see that you could draw a boundary, and that you could step through these criteria about whether or not it, it meets these growth management planning goals. So my next question would be, the question that was asked of the residents of that entire PAA was whether or not they wanted to join Isqwa. We didn't specifically ask this group here, did they want to join Isqwa with that question. So even though I know the precinct data said there was, for that particular question, more than 60% saying that they would like to join Isqwa, I think where I'm getting a little bit stuck right now is I'd like to know the next steps, like beyond this. Does taking a piece like this out affect Samamish's ability to effectively annex the rest of the area? Does it put the residents in the larger original PAA area at risk of not being able to be annexed? That would be my next question after you've given us this answer.
All right, thank you. So, real quickly, there, in the, in the handout materials, there was some other information. You actually had listed the criteria from the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Do you have that?
I do.
On a slide?
This would be the, generally, the city's annexation criteria. And then, in the next slide, I have the, the state Boundary Review Board criteria. And again, since some of the Boundary Review Board criteria is more data-specific, revenues, to make sure revenues and service provisions, they want it finer tuned. And again, we did a back of the napkin to find out broad numbers. But if we had to actually go to Boundary Review Board with this information, we'd have to actually study it a little deeper.
Of course. Okay, so it is definitely a very quick, our own assessment. It's not, it's, it's just, thank you for, you satisfied our request. Could you go back one slide again?
Sure.
So there's been some mention, I just think it's for everybody's benefit, that, and Bob said, you know, criteria a number of times, and that, you know, we actually have, this is from our comprehensive plan, you can see the policy statement that's up there, and when, and what we, as a council, should be considering when looking at a potential annexation. These are, and these are very, very broad terms. There are specifics, you know, you could spend quite a bit of time, I think, provide, what does mean, what does it mean, provide community solutions? And the answer is yes. I mean, we, we could, we could spend some time, you know, diving down into those. And, you know, I've taken a look at this and talked to some people, and it, it seems to me that, you know, we could maybe fine tune some of these details, you know, such as the boundary, maybe. We could have a conversation about that. But, you know, my own assessment is that, even if we fine tune things, we wouldn't really significantly alter this, what I would call a very preliminary assessment, that the southern portion of the PAA, you know, could, could be a benefit to the city if it were annexed. I, I think we could fine tune this, but that general assessment probably wouldn't change. However, I think what's been missing from all our deliberations so far is, over this issue, is that we don't, we don't have information about other ways that Isqwa and our neighbors could benefit from a different course of action. If I characterize what we've done so far as looking at things from the 1,000-foot level, you know, looking at a particular region, then I think what I think, what I think we should do next is look at things from a 10,000-foot level. From this regional perspective, there may be other benefits to Isqwa and to our neighbors in Samamish and King County, if we give up the entire PAA. I'm very grateful for the visit from Samamish Mayor Tom Vance, and he mentioned the problems for his citizens with some of the regional roads in the area, and his city's willingness to make improvements to the Isqwa Falls City Road as soon as possible. If a better Isqwa Falls City Road contributes to a stronger Samamish, well, that's better for Isqwa. This might be just one example of a win-win scenario that comes into focus when we raise our eye level and look at how everyone could benefit from a different course of action, such as giving up the entire PAA. So what I like about the material that you presented is that it's a very disciplined use of the annexation criteria spelled out in our comprehensive plan, as well as our take on the annexation criteria used by the Boundary Review Board. In doing so, we have taken a quick look at the southern portion and the preliminary assessment that, that it can work. But now, I'd like to shift our focus to another set of criteria. This is my preference. I want to learn about what's best for the entire region. I think it's time we start talking with Samamish and King County. I'd like to set aside the question of annexation of just the southern portion. I'll say that again. I'd like to set aside the question of annexation of just the southern portion. I'd like for our mayor to immediately start friendly talks with Samamish and King County to explore ways that we can all benefit by Isqwa giving up the entire PAA. And I'm asking to hear back before the end of April about such talks. So those are my comments. I think I saw Tola first, and then Josh?
I'll just say, I think as Chair of Land and Shore, and Trish mentioned the, the language that we put into the comprehensive plan, I think what you just elucidated, to my way of thinking, jibes well with the conversations that we've had thus far, and is in line with that. So I think that there have been a number of challenges in this last year that have been regional in scope. And I think that Isqwa has risen to those challenges, and we now have, in a couple of areas, better regional solutions. And I'd like to see this be part of that conversation.
Josh, then, Naina?
Thank you. You know, I, I saw this a couple of days ago when it was emailed to us, and I, I asked what this was, not knowing that the Land and Shore Committee had requested this information. I, I didn't hear back, so I didn't know until tonight where this actually came from. Was this an official administration proposal? Was this for public comment? What was this map? And I think I understand now, you know, the, the, the basic back of napkin calculations and so forth. You know, I, I look at this, and, and I think this is a good starting point for the conversation. I don't think it's the be-all and end-all, because when I look at the, the lines drawn on the map, some things jump out, which is, it's, it's not narrowly tailored at all. It's got areas up here in the lime green and the purple. It's not up there, but, you know, areas that are getting pretty close to the east end of Klahani Drive off of Isqwa Falls City Road. And I, I don't see the need for going further east. And, and my big concern on this is really the, the Isqwa Falls City Road project. And I went back and I looked at the numbers again, and I'll reiterate, this was not in the Nesbit Study. So I don't know how we can possibly suggest that financially we've put a check mark and a yes next to all these things, when we're talking about a $19 million road project, the widening of five lanes, curb gutter and sidewalk, which is labeled in King County's CIP as going from the intersection at Highlands Drive and Isqwa Falls City Road to Klahani Drive Southeast as CP17 in the King County CIP. Look at their map. That's where that project goes. If you extend the boundary that far east, as is being suggested in this proposal, we would essentially be taking on a $19 million road project within our capital facilities plan. That would be the third most expensive project in our capital facilities plan, after the proposed LID and the overcrossing. No other project in the city is $19 million or even close to that. So our taxpayers would bear the brunt of extending an annexation boundary along Isqwa Falls City Road. And this was one of the principal points that I made in being against the annexation in the first place. So when I see this, and I see the results of the vote that failed, my first thought is, you know, my kids just watched Frozen with me for the first time. Let it go. Those are the words that I remember from the movie. Let it go. But then I say, well, can we do this in a narrowly tailored way to find a way that's beneficial? And I think Mary Lou's question is a great one. Can we make this work for both Isqwa and Samamish? Can we make this work for the residents of Klahani and the other subdivisions? And I, I agree wholeheartedly with your suggestion, Paul, about having those meetings, having those discussions, bringing Samamish in, bringing the county in. Because if we're looking at taking on any part of that road obligation, that very expensive road obligation, we need to talk about fair share. And I think, Bob, you had a very salient comment earlier when you were talking about Front Street. You said, quote, "It's not completely fair for our community to bear the brunt of regional traffic." And I made a note of that, because that applies precisely to this situation. We need to work with our regional partners. So this, I think, is a good starting point. On its face, if this were being pitched to us, it's, it's a difficult sell for me. But I think we need to have those conversations, and we need to do it soon. We need to have a decision. And, and when you said, you know, set aside, I'm okay with setting aside to have the conversations. I'm not okay with setting aside to leave these folks in limbo. So there, there's a fine line between taking the time that we need and that our partners need, and just deferring the entire issue to some later date. And I, I want to make sure that the neighborhoods have certainty of how all the parties are proceeding.
Thank you. Naina?
I'm so wrapped in listening here. See if I can get my mind back into what I was thinking. Thank you. And thank you for all the information you provided. It really was a lot of work. And, and I, I want to thank you sincerely, because I, I might sound very critical, but there was, there was still nothing really very tidy about this. And tell me if I'm wrong, but there's still parts of this new little boundary that has people who didn't vote over 60% to be part of our, to be accepted into Isqwa. And then when you have a report that talks about whether the fair share discussion has a 20 to 30% margin of error, I know it's a back of a napkin, but all I mean to say, I'm pointing out that this doesn't really give me quite enough to make a decision on. But even, even if it, if it did all tidy up, which I doubt it can, it's just a complicated topic, and it's, it's got a lot of parts to it. I really appreciate the comments that I've already heard from Paul, especially when, every time I go back and look at a regional map, and I take kind of a selfless look at the, the long-term layout of our area and how these communities work together, it, it looks so obvious to me that this is a, that either the, that the entire Klahani PAA, since the time we began looking at taking it over, has changed in its proximity to the other regional jurisdictions. And when I look at it now, it just looks so Samamish, that it has that opportunity. Has it, if we look at our Growth Management Act and the King County policies, to have one small nexus of, of boundary that we share, is, is not as strong a relationship as the boundary that's shared by Samamish. So I, I wanted to support what Paul was saying at the 10,000-foot level, what it looks like to me. And then I feel like that's kind of a selfless look, too. It's not what I want, what Klahani wants, what Samamish wants. What really is it? This is something that's taken away from my ego decision. And I also appreciate Josh's comments about, about the road. And, and without being too poetic about it, it, people keep saying, well, the road's the problem. Well, you know, the road's not the problem, it's the traffic that's the problem. And the traffic is regional. And, and inheriting a road to solve its problem is not going to solve a road's problem. It's, it's much bigger. So I appreciate all of that. And, and thank you very much for bringing this to us and for letting me comment on it.
Excuse me, Eileen, then, Stacy?
Thank you. This has just been a very long process. I can't even remember how many years that we've been going through this process, for the city and for all of the residents that possibly could be affected with this. I think taking a little bit more time to really take a good, hard look at this, bring in the information that we need, talk the conversations with Samamish, the conversations with King County, and find out exactly what options that are, are there. And then, it's, it's a hard decision. I know there is a great deal of you that are the residents there that are, are very much involved with Isqwa and consider yourself Isqwa residents. And there is a very strong contingency that supports the city of Samamish and would like to live in the city of Samamish. So I, I believe we need to have a few more moments to make a really honest decision, take a look at it, and then make the decision. However, the timeline seems really short to get very much information brought back to us. And I, I'm just hoping that we can do what is right for everybody. That's going to be hard. But we'll get some more information, talk with King County, talk with Samamish, and see what we can do for both sides of this, and bring this to a conclusion.
Stacy?
Thank you. So I agree with several of the comments tonight. I think not tidy is a good word. And I also, there's not anywhere near enough information to make a decision. I, I think we, I think we knew that. I have, I have lots of questions still about the, the answers to some of the criteria that we listed for the comp plan. We just have yes and nos in some places, and so I don't know what that means, because we don't have any explanation there. I also have a great concern about the road, for a lot of the same reasons that were talked about, about tonight. And I also support Paul's comments about... reasons that were talked about, about tonight. And I also support Paul's comments about raising ourselves up a little bit higher from the ground and, and taking a broader look.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Lou?
I was told at a training session that once everybody's talked, then you're allowed to talk again. So because I got to talk before Paul, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated your comments. I like your timeframe, and I like your approach about bringing everything. I'm fully supportive of what you said. It sounded great.
Thank you. Anybody else? And I, and I, I do want to say something else myself and Eileen, I, just to clarify, in case it wasn't, wasn't clear, you know, I asked that they immediately begin friendly conversations and just get a report back by, in the April timeframe. I realize it's late March, but I, I think part of the timing is that it would, our colleague, Mr. Martz, will be at a GMPC meeting in May, and the topic, this topic is on the agenda for just a progress update. And I would like, if people are going to be talking, I'd like to, our council to get a briefing even before the GMPC. So that's the reason for, for that timeframe. Josh?
I have a question. On the slide that showed the comp plan docket amendment for the proposed language, could we go back to that for a moment? So, is the timing of the conversations that are being talked about, if the council were to take action in terms of that recommended language, that, that seems to be broad enough. I guess I'm just seeking agreement. That's broad enough that it wouldn't affect any of those discussions, because we're saying part or all, or a smaller subset, or, so in other words, we wouldn't have to worry that if we took action by April 7th, somehow this dialogue is going to throw a wrench in that?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it all fits.
Thank you. Stacy?
I was just going to say that, excuse me, that was the purpose for the broad language.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? So Bob, I'm, I'm hearing a fairly consistent message. Hopefully, you're hearing the same thing. And I know that we're going to have a leadership meeting tomorrow morning, and so we can discuss it a little bit further if needed. I appreciate everybody's comments this evening. And so if you have no other information to share with us, then we're going to wrap up that item on the agenda and move to our final item for tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is regional reports. And let me, let me, let me just say something. We might want to go look at our Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda template, because this is something now that we're doing at every one of our regular business meetings as well. So just a week ago, we got regional committee updates. So if you have anything that's new from the last week, either local, or either our own city or regional committees, that's all you have to cover. So, so we get, we start with you, Naina.
Start with the new kid. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not prepared to say a lot, because I only went to my first meeting. I'm on the Cascade Water Alliance, serving as an alternate to Mayor Butler, who has served on the alliance for many years. And it was, it was really exciting, wonderful, a long session. My first meeting was a retreat, so we had five hours together, and I got to know everybody quite well. And so I thought that was a great start to my service on that organization. And I'm excited to share with all of you that I didn't realize till I got there, the knowledge and education that I brought with me, and things that I had already known about this organization. I feel like I could really take off running with this group. It's going to be really fun, and I hope to do a good job for you with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lou?
No report.
Thank you. Tola?
No report.
Thank you. Josh?
I did want to just update from my last regional report for ETP, that the, the Chair and co-Vice Chair and myself did meet to discuss our 2014 work plan. And we didn't receive a significant amount of input from the member jurisdictions on that, so we just went ahead. And we've got a general work plan in place that we're going to present to the partnership at our next meeting, which I believe will be at a different location. So if you're an alternate and you actually want to go check in with me, because I think our usual meeting location at the Bellevue School District is booked for the next couple months. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Eileen?
Thank you. I attended the Wyre Eight. That's the water resource inventory area, and eight is for the section right here, our watershed. I replaced the past Mayor Ava Freysenger, and so I'll be representing him. I've previously been on this board, representing fish friends of Iskua Salmon Hatchery, so I'm just trying to get caught back up again with where they're at. And so there was a quick look at the continuation of the work plan, and I will get better caught up and get back to where everyone is in regards to water inventory and resources for our salmon. So more, more later.
Thank you. Stacy?
No report.
Okay. And I'll just mention briefly, last Wednesday, the Eastside Human Services Forum, which I am a city's representative and I chair. We held a, a breakfast to, and with not only cities from the east side, the forum, but also other cities from the Arch Coalition. And Arch is starting to formulate a potential, potentially, a trust fund project involving a permanent winter shelter on the east side. So that was the subject. And so our mayor, mayors of Samamish, Medina, Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Kenmore, and representatives from Bothell and other cities were there as well. So it's just, it was, it's the beginning stages, but it was a very interesting proposal. And, you know, it's a little bit, it would be a little bit different, because the Arch Housing Trust Fund projects have pretty much been our own projects. But the local committee to end homelessness has recognized the lack of a winter shelter on the east side as a hole in their strategy, and they have adopted it as one of their objectives as well, that opens up such a project then to state and federal funds as well. So there's some developments along those lines. So it was, it's very early and preliminary, but that was the purpose of the, of the breakfast. So that's my report. So that concludes our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.